This conference will now be recorded.
All right, thank you so much. You may be seated at this time. Please take your cell phones and either cut them off, put them on vibrate. I know you all have some awesome ringtones. It will be chair and leather. And if any of the commissioners have any conflict of interest on anything that is on the agenda tonight, would you please let us know now? If not, we'll move on and accept the motion to adopt the agenda as it is. I'm going to go down. Second. All in favor? Okay, thanks Steve. Next up is the presentation of the advanced law enforcement certificate to Police Officer Josh Hayden. And Heather or one of y'all could use that microphone so they could hear the presentation pulled in front of them or something.
So, North Carolina Training and Standards, they issue advanced certificates to an officer, an advanced certificate to an officer when he has obtained a combination of time in service and educational hours. So this is the highest certificate that the state offers from Training and Standards and Officer Hayden, he has obtained that objective.
Don't get all pitched. Congratulations Officer Hayden. All right, next up is the Town Manager Report. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce to you our interim town manager, Mr. Frank Rush. And we're so happy you're here. Thank you so much for tolerating us, number one. And I'll just turn the floor over to you now, sir.
Thank you Mayor Baker. Thank you Commissioners. Thank you community for having me here. I'm happy to be here and hopefully I can be as helpful as possible to all the folks in this room and all the folks in this community during my time here in Cape Carteret. I wanted to just take a few minutes and update the board and the community on a few issues, one of which I suspect may be why a lot of you are here this evening. So I wanted to address that issue right up front. There were two applications for special use permits for proposed town home projects, one on Taylor and Ocean Road, one on Star Hill Drive. Those applications have been withdrawn by the developers. We received that notification from them last week. For that reason, we obviously did not schedule the special use permit consideration for tonight. And we also removed the public hearing for the proposed text amendment that would have allowed townhomes as a special use permit in the R 30 district. So those applications are withdrawn. They are not moving forward at this time and perhaps never. It will depend on what the applicant wishes to do, applicants wish to do going forward. What I did want to update the board and the community on is that I expect to begin a conversation tomorrow evening with the planning board, talking about multifamily housing in Cape Carteret and really talking about a few key questions. One is, is there a need for multifamily housing in Cape Carteret? And if there is, that's great. If there's not, that's great too. If there's not, that's probably the end of the conversation. If there is a need for multifamily housing in Cape Carteret, the question then is what type might be acceptable or desired in this community? And if there's dialogue on that issue, and that's productive, the next question is, okay, where might this be appropriate in our community? Y'all are obviously familiar with the geography of Cape Carteret, Old Cape Carteret, Bay Shore, the Star Hill area. Are there certain areas where it might make sense? And if so, what kinds of conditions or standards would this community want to put in place to guide that development in the future? And I expect that that conversation will occur probably over the next couple of months, perhaps longer. But the intent tomorrow with the planning board is to have that dialogue and get a sense for where they would like to go and then figure out if that's something we want to do, what's the best mechanism in this community to make that happen in the future in a way that protects the community's interests, protects the neighbors' interests, and hopefully makes us a better community for everyone involved. So that's the reason those items are not on the agenda tonight. Where I expect to go from here, again, the planning board discussion tomorrow night, depending on how that goes, that may come to the Board of Commissioners in August. I think that's probably unlikely, but it could happen. I may very well go to another meeting of the planning board, then ultimately on to the Board of Commissioners as the decision-making body for whatever might be proposed going forward. What I would like to do for everyone in this room tonight, if you have concerns about these projects and ideas that you think we need to consider, I'd like to sit down and talk with you. So contact me, shoot me an email, frush@capecarteret.org. I believe it's on our city website. Call me at City Hall. I'll be happy to make the time to come out to your neighborhood or meet with you here at Town Hall and talk about the issues and hopefully try to come up with something that folks in the community will appreciate. Obviously, ultimately, it's up to the Board of Commissioners to make the policy decisions that they believe are best for the community. So that's where we're headed with that issue. And I wanted to just make the community aware of what actions have occurred and why they've occurred and where we might be going. So a few other things to update you on, just very briefly. I think you're familiar with the drainage issues on Sutton Drive. I've had some conversations with Paxton Holtz on behalf of the golf course and still having more conversations with her about trying to secure an easement through the golf course and hopefully take advantage of some survey work that she had completed on behalf of the golf course. Hoping I can come to you at a future meeting and bring some, some ideas for consideration to you on that issue. Want to let you know I'm working on that. Want to also let you know that Police Officer Mike Bishop unfortunately is leaving us. His last day of employment with the town of Cape Carteret will be August the 3rd. We're going to miss Mike and certainly wish him well as he pursues new career opportunities in the Knightdale area. So best wishes to Mike going forward. A few other things we're working on. The Western Carteret Fire Department has proposed some amendments to the fire prevention ordinance. Really need to dig deeper into those in the coming weeks and you may see that on an upcoming agenda. We are, I appreciate everyone's patience with us during the transition period, trying to get up to speed on how things are done in Cape Carteret here. We probably haven't been as active on social media as I would like and what my goals will be in the future, but we're working on that. And I'm certainly going to try to do the best job we can to keep people well informed about what's happening in Cape Carteret. Likewise, we're processing development permits. I think we're pretty well caught up right now, but again, just trying to get through the transition period. Appreciate everyone's patience and understanding on those things. Again, planning board meeting meets tomorrow, planning board meets tomorrow night, six o'clock in this room. If you're interested, please come by. Again, please call me if you want to talk. Happy to do that. And then lastly, two, I think, bits of really good news to report. One is the fireworks show last Sunday was well received and went, went pretty well from all reports that I've heard. Certainly, the group that planned and organized it has learned some things and there'll be a debrief meeting later this month to take those lessons and apply them to any future events, but generally a really good event for this part of the county and I hope folks had a really good time with that. And then lastly, the watermelon festival held on Saturday afternoon, really well attended. I think folks had a really good time. A lot of great food trucks and vendors and musicians there. And I just want to personally thank our staff for their hard work in making that happen. A lot of effort went into this in a time of transition. And so thank you to Barbara, to Heather, to Sandy, to the chief, to Ryan Hutchinson in Public Works and all of our other employees for helping make that just a really nice event for the community. So with that, that's my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about anything else that's on your mind either now or later on in the agenda. Thank you Mayor and Commissioners.
Thank you Frank. I don't have any questions for Frank and we'll move on. Next up is public comment. We have three people sign up to speak this evening. And we'll start and move right down the line. If I mispronounce your name, please forgive me. Alex Quintala, Quintala?
Yeah. Good evening. Really more some questions. I think Mr. Rush kind of may have addressed some of them already, but regarding the text amendment that's no longer on, being proposed or has been tabled, if I recall from the last meeting. If there's no action taken on that, what, what's, what's the outcome? Nothing? So just goes away?
Pretty much. That was just a request to make an action, in other words.
Gotcha. And then just one more. So are the commissioners going to take any action on the planning board's current recommendation for the verbiage regarding the single-family detached? I know that one's still on the table. I believe the last time we were here, y'all said you were going to table that discussion, but is that something that the commissioners are planning on taking action on or where is that?
Well, it hasn't been officially brought up yet, so to speak. So we'll, we'll, we'll see. Here again, that's another issue that'll come up. We'll deal with it as the planning board sees fit. They're meeting tomorrow night, so they may have a formal presentation or something. My goal is, is to eventually, once we get some things settled down, will be to have a joint meeting with the planning to try to discuss, you know, where we want to go forward, things, some things of that nature and just alluding to what Frank was saying, how we want to proceed.
Okay. Well, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next up is Cliff Traut.
The trailers, you've got one permit for a trailer, right? Isn't that the way it is? Okay, how many boats can they put in on that one boat? Somebody has 15, 20, 30, 40 boats. Is he allowed to use that trailer for those 15, 20 boats?
Well, I assume if I had three boats and one trailer, then I would use three boats and one trailer.
Now, are you allowed to use it for commercial? That's a commercial business.
Would you define "commercial"?
A boat that's sold by a commercial business.
Normal out would say no.
Okay. Well, that's happening down there right now. And I've noticed that there's a lot of, like, every weekend, some of the homeowners down there are blocking up the ends of the streets where we have parks. They park the cars, they park, they've got basketball courts, they've had this, they've had that. Okay, I realize the police chief talked about it. I realize, you know, we have an officer. It's hard to catch all that. But they sit there all weekend sometimes, especially on the holidays. Okay, I'm, we have road right-of-ways down the streets, right, 15 feet or whatever it is off the road. Okay, they park the trailers so none of the boats can park. Now, those people, when they built their homes, knew what it was. When they built their homes, when they built their homes right up against the water, they knew that was a park. Half of those parks you can't even get to in weekends. I went down to the little boat dock, a little hire rack down there. That, that hasn't been moved in weeks. That's, that's disgusting for this town. I think I'm going to take a picture and put it on the thing to show the people what the town really does. Because that's it. Now, a possibility there was a document every 10 years. To why when you're supposed to, the town is supposed to put it's everywhere. I don't know. It sort of looks like it's going on in this town. No, are we going to because right now it's still hot.
All right. There you go. Thank you, sir. Next up, Tricia Rodman. Take your time.
Well, I have a whole bunch of others. But first I'd like to congratulate Josh. When he really goes home, he's always here. And he has seen me with him in the ambulance all the time. Because he's here. I'm telling him, I'm going to especially how I don't think of experience with heroes in the name. You are you know sometimes my typing fingers go off and I'm brain and I'm just go out and go over there. So can I use my or wait to vote? Just I apologize. But you can say that if they're on the board, they're working doing their jobs and they don't always feel the same. And that or yeah. That's and the entire town, not just yeah. So the individuals who offer multi-joints, multi-take that just all here we are still. I think that in the last so they where to me there's yes. Or it's where you now. So it's not like I, you know, law on it. Just want to say I don't we have a one stage right now. I think we did right now.
Well, I hope you're doing okay. Good here. Make sure your husband's take care of it. Thank you. Thank you. And I love seeing people. This is what it's all about. I think that's some of the issues. There's so many people nowadays tend to want to get all their information off of social media and Facebook rather than coming here and getting it firsthand. I love to see people come here and some of the stuff that, here again, I don't go to some of these sites because they're just, they're poison, they're negative, they're keyboard warriors with, with nothing but negativity and these, these, some of the allegations though, I will, I will say this. You know, we're toward our staff and that, that is inexcusable. We're better people than that as a community. We're a small town. There's, there's none of that crap going on in this town, to put it just as bluntly as I can. Our staff has nothing to do with the decisions that are made regarding special use permits or anything of that nature. That's decided by this board. So, you know, if, if you want to attack somebody, these guys are elected to do that, to be your fodder. But do it civilly, do it here. And if somebody wants to come, bring a petition to this town, they've got every right to do that. It's up to this board in this town to decide what happens after that. The thing to remember at the end of the day, we're all neighbors and we should be able to get along. And the best thing we can do is take these computers and kick them to the curb some days. And enough of that said, I'm moving on with the evening. All right, next up is the consent agenda. Had several items on that. Hopefully the board had time to review all those. If so, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion to approve consent agenda as written. Okay, second? I'll second. Any comment? Not, all, all in favor? Okay. Consent agenda passed. Next is the Emergency Management Disaster Relief and Mitigation Grant.
Thank you Mayor Baker, Commissioners. I'm pleased to present two items for your consideration tonight that I know are of particular interest and concern in the community. Very positive step, I think, going forward for the community. The town was fortunate to be awarded a grant from the Emergency Management, North Carolina Emergency Management Agency for $200,000. And the purpose of the grant is to complete detailed design and permitting work actually at seven stormwater locations in the town that I think have historically experienced significant flooding after heavy rainfall events. So those are Sutton Drive, Arden Oaks, Dolphin Street, Loma Linda Court, Neptune Court, Neptune Drive and Bog Sound Drive. And I want to compliment the previous manager Zach Steffi on his work. A copy of the grant application is included in the packet tonight that culminated with the award of those grant funds. The grant, the action before the board tonight, there are two actions. One is a formal resolution to accept the grant and authorize the interim town manager to take all necessary steps to implement the grant funds. Second is a budget amendment that would formally appropriate the $200,000 to the town's budget for the purpose of design work and permitting going forward. Some of the, the key points associated with the grant funds, it is for design and permitting only. It is for the seven locations that I just mentioned. It does have a deadline of December 31st of 2023 for us to complete all work under this grant agreement. I think that's ample time to complete the work. However, if we run into some snags, I think there'll probably be some opportunities for extensions, but our goal obviously will be to complete that work as quickly as we possibly can going forward. And the goal of the grant funds is to essentially get solutions for these seven locations to basically quote shovel-ready status so that when the town identifies funding for construction, we can move quickly and award contracts for that. Practically speaking, if the board approves the items tonight for your consideration, as was just approved on your consent agenda, there was a budget amendment for some funding for Crystal Coast Engineering and Prestige Land Surveying, looking at a total of 12 locations, seven of which are the same locations that are included in the scope of this grant agreement. They are still working on the survey work and their initial analysis of those seven, I'm sorry, of those 12 locations. They expect to finish that work really incrementally over the next roughly six to 10 weeks or so. And we'll have at least some initial recommendations from their work on what the best solution might be for Arden Oaks or for Sutton Drive or what have you. My recommendation to this board is to let that work proceed, let that work be completed. I think it's likely that on some of those 12 locations, there'll be some relatively easily implemented solutions that we can discuss and hopefully make a decision to go forward on construction of those improvements. There probably, some of those 12 locations are going to be much more complex. And my recommendation to you would be to get the results of the work of Crystal Coast Engineering, make those determinations, and then use these grant funds for those locations that are likely more complicated, either from a design standpoint, maybe more expensive from a construction standpoint, maybe more complicated from a permitting standpoint, and really try to direct these grant funds toward those locations that are going to require some more effort going forward. So we should have the Crystal Coast Engineering report back again in the next probably six to 10 weeks. And in the meantime, start putting together a request for proposals for some more detailed engineering services for whatever other locations and really be prepared to release that to qualified engineering firms, hopefully in the September-ish timeframe. So again, two items. One is the resolution simply accepting the grant funds. Second is the budget amendment. The good news, as I think you all already know, is that once we identify the solutions, design the solutions and permit the solutions, you have some funding available that you can apply toward actually constructing the solutions and hopefully resolving some of these problems once and for all. So right now, we've got $561,000 and some change available that at least my understanding is you've tentatively earmarked for future stormwater infrastructure construction. That money's available, depending on what we learn from Crystal Coast Engineering and depending on how much some of the detailed design work costs under this grant. It may be that we can identify some of these grant funds for construction in the future. We would need to go back to the state and request an amendment, but I'm hoping that we may be able to also free up some of those funds as well. We'll see how things go. Good news is, is I think you've got a real opportunity to make some nice improvements in the coming months. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, this is for the seven, the $200,000 is for the seven specific locations. What happens if one of those locations falls out? Do we, do we have any flexibility to move? Add a location? Let's say one of those locations is primarily on private property, solutions but is there the ability for us to move a new location with this one or are we stuck to those?
Yeah, so the, I guess the direct answer is, I don't know, but I think so. I think we would have to go back to the granting agency and request an amendment. But, you know, the overall goal of the project is to identify solutions at various locations in town. And I think certainly if we pick another location, that'll be consistent with the grant award. So I, my answer to you, I want to say, yes, we should be able to do that, but we would need their permission.
Any other questions for Frank? So do we need to do both separately? Okay, all right. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the execution of the grant agreement.
I will make that motion.
Second, all in favor? Steve, okay, I see him now. Thanks Steve. All right, and now entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment for those funds.
Make that motion.
Second. All right. All in favor? All right, thank you. Gentlemen? Sure, go ahead.
If it is not on the additional set of locations, do you have any votes? Are they missing? That's a grant or something. They help. Now, how, how the thing is, what he's asking, treating for
Well, we just took the seven most devastated area, I guess, to say, so the top seven, but there's a lot of other areas like you're talking about that we're going to be looking at. And hopefully some of this stuff we can do in-house, you know, with, with some easy, easy fixes type of things. And here again, there's a lot, there's a lot going on. We are at sea level. And we're going to have flooding. It's just a matter of, is there any ways we can alleviate it, try to make it, you know, better? That's just about every street in town. But these were ones that, that affected the most people in an area for property damage and houses flooding and things like that in nature, not just the roads.
And shows the construction behind it, heavy rain or hurricane. We are unfortunately on the lower end of that. I did contact the town for more than that. But you know, look, I mean, you showed the town, do some work in the ditches next to our home, out in the store and that. The last two summers, my neighbor Mary, I'm bothered, I told him, tell him to chop lots of dirt in, raise for all multiple shit. And just again, have a mulch. I recently spoke to a planning board member, pointing out five city.
That's a good question. And Planning Board hopefully can deal with that some tomorrow night.
Mayor Baker, commissioners, ma'am, I'd be happy to come out to your house and take a look at that. Obviously, I just started, but would love to meet you out there and learn the concern and see if we can figure something out. So if you wanted.
Sometimes, well, I'm going to have to stop because we can do this all night long. We have an opportunity to begin to speak. And I do want, in our small town, we try to be as informal we can, but we need to keep going. But if you have issues like that, please call. Sometimes stuff gets involved between the tracks, the cracks, especially after a storm like that. We get inundated from so many areas. And I apologize that we don't, you know, get to them as expedited as we can. Plus, we had all kinds of other issues come up, so I apologize. But please, you know, call us back and like I say, Frank, or one of our staff members will try to do what we can. And there's a lot of issues like that that, there again, it's all over town that we're dealing with. All right, so next up is the updated invitation of the new boat ramp pass policy.
Thank you, Mayor Baker, commissioners. I really just wanted to take an opportunity to update the board and the community on where we stand on the implementation of the new policy and then get some direction from you going forward if you'd like to make any adjustments or if you'd like to continue with the policy that you all decided on in June. So as you all know, you implemented some fee increases for the passes at your June meeting and also established a cap of 285 passes to be issued in total. And so as of nine o'clock this morning, we were at 278, I'm sorry, 279. We have, no, 277, we have eight passes available. We have five now, so three more got sold today. So there are five more passes available before we reach the cap of 285. I included a breakdown in your packet of the number of passes issued to Cape Carteret residents and residents of some of the surrounding towns. As you can see, as expected, the majority of passes have been issued to residents, property owners of Cape Carteret. 214 passes altogether, 165 residents, property owners. So essentially what that means is 165 people got one pass and 49 people got a second pass as well. In Bog, Cedar Point, and Pelleteer, 54 passes issued, and in the other two, six passes issued. Now, those numbers have changed slightly since I wrote this for you on Thursday. But to give you a sense for how many we've issued and where those folks are from, I expect that probably in the next couple of days, certainly within the next week, I expect we will hit the cap of 285. And wanted to discuss with the board your interest in holding firm to that cap or if there's any flexibility particularly for Cape Carteret residents and property owners going forward. For the audience, if I could ask you to mute yourselves, those viewing online, we would appreciate that. There's a loud noise coming through.
That sounds like somebody snoring, doesn't it? I know these aren't very entertaining meetings and I apologize for that. But just a moment, we'll see if we can get that. I think it went away, somebody just clicked off, so yeah, it's a lot quieter now.
But the one, the one thing I failed to mention in my comments, from a revenue standpoint, as of Thursday, we had brought in almost $71,000. That exceeds the budget estimate of $65,280. So we've already met our budget target for the current fiscal year. We brought in probably a few thousand dollars more since I wrote this on Thursday. So from a budget standpoint, we're certainly in good shape going forward. My concern and my reason for bringing this forward to you this evening is, A, to give you an update on where things stand. And secondly, is because I suspect that there may be some Cape Carteret residents and property owners that have not secured a boat permit yet, who may show up in August, maybe September, and probably would very much like to have a permit. So really, I think the question for you all is, do you want us to hold firm to the cap of 285? Or is there some flexibility? Does the board want to adjust the cap in some small way? Or does, for example, does the board potentially want to delegate to the manager some sort of incremental adjustments to that number with reports back to the board on a periodic basis? So those are the ideas, and I certainly welcome any questions or other ideas that you have.
Mayor, I'd like to lead off discussion on this issue.
Go right ahead, Steve.
First of all, when we, when we discussed this at the last board meeting, we knew that we were, we're going to have to tweak this at some point in time. I just didn't realize that we would possibly be discussing it this quickly. There's one thing that sticks out in my mind here. The 49 second passes, if you will, to, 165 passes to residents and 49 second passes. To me, that, there's no way you go, more than likely not going to launch two boats at the same time. So it tells me we have a little room to tweak this, if you will. I would be in, I don't like to second guess myself. The board passed 5-0 at a 285 cap. The goal was to lower capacity, we achieved that, and to maintain revenue, we exceeded that. That was a shock and a surprise to me. But I think we have room here to tweak, tweak it a little bit. And what I would be in favor of doing would be to give the town manager, say, 10 passes, but keep the board informed on a monthly basis and limit those passes to Cape Carteret residents only. And the only reason I'm saying that is because 49 second passes, it's not going to add to the capacity or to the, the usage of the dock around, in my opinion. So I wouldn't increase the cap, but I would allow the town manager to issue, just give him 10 passes to issue, but keep the board informed. And like I said, the only reason I would be in favor of that is because of the 49 second passes, which theoretically, if you subtract 49 from 285, you're actually only getting 236, theoretically, 236 boats using that facility. And we know not at one time, but I hope everybody understands what I'm trying to get to here. But that, that's, that's, as far as tweaking it, I would, I would do that. But as far as raising the cap outright, no, it wouldn't be interesting.
You know, the comments?
I agree also.
We need a vote or can you just have a consensus? Okay, so Steve, would you make a motion, what you said?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to change, not change, but update the boat ramp policy by allowing the town manager at this point in time to have 10 passes over and above the 285 to issue and to maintain dialogue with the board at future meetings as to where we stand and that those passes be limited to Cape Carteret residents only.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second then.
All in favor? All right, thank you. Next up is the, well, we have planning board updates, but we haven't had the planning board meeting yet. That's tomorrow night due to the holiday and everything. So everybody, please feel free to come back tomorrow night, you know, and another exciting meeting. I'm sure Susan will be more than happy to welcome you all there for that. There again, a lot of, a lot of fun stuff happens at planning board. Unless you've got something you'd like to say, Susan? Okay. All right, so town staff updates.
I would first call on Chief McKinney to give you a brief update, followed by Ryan Hutchinson and Sandy.
You would cut the microphone on there. Thank you, chief.
Just real quick, real quickly, we'd like to see everyone come out this Thursday to, for Coffee with a Cop. We've implemented that again last month, it'll be at 10 a.m. at Starbucks. And then the third Thursday of each month, we meet for Neighborhood Watch, and that will be the 21st at 6 p.m. here in this room. We'll have some refreshments and we'd like to see more people come out and join. And I'd like to give a shout out to Lisa Miller. She is our chairperson and she is carrying this Neighborhood Watch program. She's contributed lots to this in the manner of social media and other things. So that's, that's what I have.
Okay, thank you, chief. Thank you, Ron, and you guys do an awesome job. That's what people don't understand, it's a small crew that does everything. They do the paving, they pick up the brush, they do everything road maintenance-wise and all the ditches and all the mowing and everything. So occasionally, it's hard to get everything done at the same time. So patience is something we really would just like for you to have. And like I say, they did a great job Saturday as well.
Obviously, the shortest one here, I'm Sandy, I'm finance officer. June 30th is the end of our fiscal year, so July has been very busy. Reports that are normally given you packets.
Thank you. And our office staff does an amazing job as well, keeping this town room very proud. Is that it? Well, then, let's hear what the commissioners have to say, and we'll start with Steve. Do you have anything?
Yes, can you hear me, mayor?
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Okay, first of all, I hope I didn't confuse the board and, and you guys in the audience about the boat ramp issue. It's, it's new to us, we, we've dealt with overcrowding for years. We're trying, we're not perfect. I feel like we'll probably end up tweaking it many times before the end of the year. I want to thank Mike Bishop for the work he did as not only a police officer, but as a code enforcement zoning officer during the time with the town. Wish him all the well, all the luck in the world. Welcome Frank Rush as our interim town manager. Appreciate all you're doing, Frank, and I know you've got a plate full and appreciate your transparency and your interaction with the citizens tonight. I would also like to say that the three public comments, I was only able to hear Mr. Trout. Mr. Trout, I got your message loud and clear about the boat ramp. I would like to talk to you in person about that at some point in time. The town has my number if you want to call me. Mrs. Ruttman and I think it was Mr. Quintilla, the microphone, as, as it just did with the staff, I couldn't hear anything you said, I'm so sorry. Would like to talk to y'all as well if you, if you feel inclined to do so. And Heather, please send me via email the link to the closed session. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Charlie? First, I'd like to thank your welcome, Rush, publicly, or right, publicly. We're glad to have you. And I'd like to say congratulations personally to Officer Hayden. I've got one thing for you that I would like to see in regards to the boat ramp. We started this discussion and last month, we got the fees dealt with, but we did not, I don't think, fully flesh out the rest of our, how it was going to work. You know, did it go on the truck, did it go on? There were some things that we talked about that we couldn't answer all the questions to, and I'd like for y'all to take a look at, at sorting that out before, you know, we have to do this again for next year, so that if we need new types of stickers or whatever it is.
I think that would be very helpful, and we certainly can draft a policy for the board to review and make sure you're comfortable with that, so we'll definitely work on that.
I think that two things that were brought up, at least while we discussed it last time, is we need to have, if in fact it does change to the cars, we need to have an option for our handicapped citizens to be able to move that to different cars if they, you know, if they need to. But I look forward to seeing what you got for us. That's it.
Mr. Waters?
I also want to thank everyone coming out. I've probably sat in these meetings for close to 12 years, either as a commissioner or a chief of police. And all that time, normally, we might have three or four, five people at most out here. And so to see this many citizens out here, regardless of where you're coming, that's what it's all about. You need to know what's going on with your town. I appreciate you, we all appreciate you being here and interested in hearing what you have to say. And I also want to welcome Frank Ward. And I also want to welcome Frank aboard, can't tell you how happy we are to have you here, congratulate Josh Hayden for his advanced certificate, for those of you don't know, the advanced certificate is just a matter of being a cop for so long that you automatically get it. You have to have the time, but there is other things like education, training, there's, some people may go through twenty years and never get their advanced, so that is, it is a very big award, congratulations to Josh, and I want to best wishes also to Mike Bishop, thank you for what he's done while he's here, and not sure what he's got next on his agenda, but I'll best for him.
You're next.
Well, I think I have to welcome Frank, and I think I have to congratulate Josh, if I didn't do that, I wouldn't be, you know, part of the crew. So I, I was out at the Watermelon Festival, I saw a lot of you here, it was hot, it was kind of amazing because it was supposed to rain, and then it just, the whole time, it was clear skies, so I thought that was kind of cool. I did, I was shuttling people back and forth to their car, and I was amazed at how many people were from out of town, I was constantly asking people, you know, well, where are you from, where'd you come, you know, and it was like Illinois, it was, you know, New Bern, I mean, it was just all over, and so it's kind of cool that they chose, you know, Cape Carteret to come down here and, and check out our festival. So anyway, that was great, I thought that staff, you guys did a great job with that, it was hot, I was sweating with you, but that was really fun, we had a good time with that. The boat ramp, you know, you know, like Commissioner Martin said, we're, we're trying to figure out what the magic number is here with this, so there is going to be a lot of tweaking. I, I personally would not like to deny a resident the ability to use the ramp, I think that's the reason for my dissenting vote just now, but, but, but it is a, we are trying to figure it out, we're trying to figure out how to make it work, how to keep it from being so congested. I put my boat in there two weeks ago, and it was packed, and that was sort of the Fourth of July, and I know that's kind of one of those anomaly days, I get that, but, you know, this is still after we had sold however many passes we had by that point, so it's a work in progress, bear with us, I, I think we are going to tweak it and, and try to get it right for everybody, so, so yeah, that's, that's all I have, thank you.
Let me just add to that, Frank, thank you for being here, love having you, man, and congratulations all for Hayden as well, and, and we're going to miss Mike Bishop, but he's done a great job for the town in several positions, and thank you, people, for being here, like I say, this is, this is your town, this is your government, this is what determines our future, that we live here, and I just hope that we can do it, we're not going to agree on everything as a whole, that, that just doesn't happen in society, but we can respect each other's opinion and try to be civil about it, and treat each other with the due respect that we all deserve, and you are heard, and we hope that we can address as many issues as we can, but if we don't know what's wrong, we can't fix it, and so sometimes it takes more effort, and we can't get things done as fast as we like, the wheels turn excruciatingly slow to them sometimes, but they do turn, I can say that much, so thank you all once again, so we're going to go into a, excuse me, sir? Yes? Is that all? Okay, anyway, I, I'd also like to thank our law enforcement, I'd like to thank also the Town of Embar Isle, the Town of Cedar Point, Pelletier, and Boge for the firework event we had during July fourth, man, I had nothing but, naturally, some people complained about the traffic, but you have that many people coming, and Mac Daddy's as well, you know, for being a part of that, the great job they did, and I thought it went very well for the amount of people and everything, and hopefully we learned some things from it, we're going to have a meeting in a couple of weeks to discuss how things went, you know, is this something we want to do again, was it that successful, how did it affect everybody, how can we make it better, if we do go forward with this? And the same thing with our Watermelon Festival, police staff, just really successful event, and just people having a great, great time, it was a little hot, and I had, that's the only complaint, when somebody told me it was hot, I said, well, you know, it's all we can do with the weather sometimes, can't, can't predict that, but I thought it went over very well, and there again, kudos to the staff and everybody for, for doing such a great job with that, and we'll see what we can do with the Fall Festival, and I, I think, I don't know if Commissioner Martin brought it up, but look at maybe just doing one or two events and doing those events the best we can, I think is the way to go, because this does take away from our staff, and they're, they're coming in on their weekend to work for us, to do things for us, and I don't, I don't want us to take advantage of that, because, you know, we should need to respect, you know, everything and do as best we can. Yes, you have a question? As far as? No, we'll get that information probably in a couple of weeks, hopefully we can have some estimates, and I'll let you know how the after-meeting goes as well, because I'm curious as well, how, how all that, you know, transposed, so we'll see, I, I missed it, I wasn't there, I'm, I'm going off what people tell me, I had to work that night, I hate, I missed it, I was sort of hoping it would rain, so we'd do it another time, and I, I, I'd be able to see it, but it's not about me, so, you know, that's, that's fine, but here again, this town is so blessed to have the staff and the police force, it does, for the size we are, you know, we have the same population as Mayberry, but Mayberry doesn't have the tourism we do, and two major intersections that we have coming through here, and modern day problems that, you know, really are problems, we got them, but they're not as, thank God, as, as bad as other towns are right now, so we're very fortunate, very blessed to be where we're at here in this town at this point in time. And with that, thank you once again, but we're going to have to go into a closed session, discuss a few things, and so I'll entertain a motion to go into the closed session pursuant for attorney-client privilege and a personnel discussion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second, all in favor? All righty, and Steve, we'll be getting you the link if you don't have it yet.
Can, can we take a ten-minute break before we go?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, that's what we're going to do, give you a chance to get squared away.
Thank you.